Great, thank you. Let's call the meeting to order for October 19th, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We do have citizen input. I believe, Rondo, you've filled out a form?
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Rondo for the record. I would like to put forward the question again that I have months ago. Keep the question alive. I've had a lot of conversation in the community about this, and I feel like I can see a lot of support in front of us. Not for this election, of course, but the next election cycle, or maybe the one before that. I would like to ask each individually of you to give me the downside of our county having a five-member commission. I'll just leave that without having a sales pitch or the conversation start today. I don't know if you're prepared for that. I have asked you to think about it, and I ask you to think about it again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that idea. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay, no hands raised. Okay, we do have three citizen input from the public. The first one is an email from a resident questioning the funds spent to address homeless. And that person has actually been homeless themselves, and they're wondering what's where the money is being spent. Then we have an email from a Joe Yetter, who's running for Congressional District Two regarding serving us. And then our third citizen input for this week is from a phone from Jake. And Jake is complaining about our sheriff's office. So those are all into the permanent record, and I thank you for those. No other comments? So let's go to the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
So I'll propose a slight change. So there's only the one agenda item is the approval of the minutes from October 5th and a bullet item talking about our health benefits plan, which we'll be talking about today. Just clarity on the statement. So our health, Deschutes County Health Benefit Plans does not cover discretionary abortions, and that's going to be the discussion today. So just a slight wording change, and we can fix it afterwards.
Great, thank you.
With that, I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Devon?
Yes.
On the chair votes, yes. Okay, we have item number two. Welcome to Senator Finley. I'm really, it's really so nice of you to take the time to come and speak with us. I know you are my senator, and I really appreciate your service. You're always available, and I know that it's going to be challenging January. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, I appreciate the time and the ability to get on your calendar. It was fairly short notice. As I was looking, I was going to be in Deschutes County. I'm going to go to a Tamarack Outdoor School tomorrow morning. I had some other business, and I looked back and realized that I'm remiss, and I have not been before this county commission since my tenure as a senator began. And I try my best to go visit all the counties at least annually. I do have a lot of communications with you throughout the year, but as we get ready for the next legislative session, I'd just like to come visit with you briefly, see if our priorities are still in alignment, and if there's any upcoming issues that you would like me to help you and address. I realize I only represent a small portion of Deschutes County, but it's very important to me to make sure that we have our, keep our connection going. I'd like to talk about legislative priorities. I've had some conversations with some of you about some other issues, and we'll go down through them if that's all right with you.
So just a quick introduction. Want to say thank you very much for joining us. Being in the room, it just gives you a feel for kind of the culture of Deschutes County and, you know, what we're doing here. County Administrator is, you know, leading the staff and the policies of Deschutes County, the board setting the policy. The other elected officials, you know, the sheriff and the district attorney and the assessor and the treasurer and the clerk, justice of the peace. So a lot of relationships can be had here, but thank you very much for joining us, for being in the room, understanding just, you know, kind of the look and the feel of Deschutes County, because that's the value when you're down on the floor at the state Capitol advocating for us. So having a great relationship. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd also like to express appreciation for your coming here today to engage with us directly. I know a lot of communication does happen through the Eastern Oregon Caucus. But because of public meeting rules, only one of us commissioners can participate in those calls at a time. And I, there's not a, there's not a huge amount of reporting back on what is discussed on those calls to the full commission. So I certainly don't feel like I, I've had a whole lot of opportunity to engage with you, Senator Finley. So it's great to see you here.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I guess if it's all right with you, I could, I could address that very briefly is that we started those calls when COVID first hit, and because it was a pretty dynamic process, and the need for what I felt and my fellow colleagues in the legislature that represents Eastern Oregon felt that we need to have an active set of dialogues, so we're all getting the same message from our constituents, and we're able to pass out our message down. And the best way to do that is as informally as we can do it on a regular basis. So that's some of the reason the public meeting laws, the calls are strictly a legislative issue. My conversations with the legislative councils on, on our ability is that we, I as a, as a senator and my colleagues have no issues with, with, with public meeting laws because we're well below our quorum numbers. And the participants have some issues that's theirs to deal with and not mine. We tried to be as fluid as we can. They're not official. We don't record them. We don't send out summaries of the, of the minutes, because sometimes they last 45 minutes, sometimes they last an hour. We have no formal agenda, and there are never any decisions per se made. It's an information flow. So, and I appreciate your comments, and, and I don't have a good answer for you.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it, your, your format is, is your format, you know, it's, it's incumbent on us at, at this level to, if, if the discussion and inputs that happens at the Eastern Oregon Caucus is supposed to represent all three of us and engage all three of us. It's incumbent on us to, to work it out so that it.
And I would, I would say is that when I, when I first took this position, my predecessor worked very hard to, to have communication. I think once a month, he would hold a conference call within the districts. And, and I, I still do that, but, but we find that there's a lot of communications that occur on, on pretty short notice and priorities changing. And I look forward to resuming those calls on a weekly basis as the legislature convenes. But we'll start having them on a monthly basis for the next few months. And we've kind of taken a little holiday for the last, last little bit to give people a break. But I, I think, I believe that the decisions are made and implemented at the lowest possible level, at the local levels, and the state here to support those. And, and I would like, the best way to do that is have constant communication. So it's my goal to continue some of that, so. I'd like to talk a little bit about what I call the watershed moment. I, and I think as far as Oregon government, this is a watershed moment that's coming up in a few weeks. Changes that will be to the state of Oregon has been made in over 40 years. We're going to have a new governor, that we're going to have new leadership in the Senate. We've had very new leadership in the House as presiding officers. Basically, it changed about a week before our last short session, and so Speaker Ray Field didn't really change anything, and that's, that's occurred. I think that as we have a new governor, I think most, in the executive branch, there will be a lot of executive departments that are going to have change of leadership. A lot of those current folks have, have moved on to other, other careers and other options. So there's a lot of change coming, and I think change is not always a bad thing. But I think to be successful, we got to make sure that we as a state, we as the legislative branch and the executive branch continue to provide the support and services we need for all of Oregonians. And to do that, we need to maintain our communication flows and work back and forth to make sure that the, the priorities from the cities and the counties are those priorities that the legislature acts on. We don't always do that, but that's my goal to do so. I do know that in communications I've had with a lot of folks, there's a lot of concerns about budgets. You know, the revenue forecast we received as the legislators a few weeks ago took the rosiness out of the picture than we've had over the last couple of years. We had, we had a budget hole when we started COVID, when we shut down a lot of the state that the economists said was approximately 10% hole in the budget that we're going to have to figure out how to maintain. So we've started making some cuts. Then the next forecast came in, and we plugged that 10% hole with a 25% patch, which gave us, you know, unprecedented amounts of revenue, and, and, and those are not sustainable. You know, those amounts of state revenue and state building over that is not sustainable, and they will not be sustained. It's expected, you know, but the economists are saying that equal chances for a recession. And, but what I can assure you is that I, I think we're going to have a much tougher time balancing our budget in this coming cycle as we convene in January. It is an accelerated calendar this year. We always thought that we're going to start a legislative session the first Monday of February. The legislative session will start the Tuesday after Martin Luther King holiday in, in January this year to ensure a signing die date of June 25th. So you want to mark your calendars and be prepared to come over and help us with legislative issues earlier than normal. The revenue forecast, we'll get another one in a couple of weeks, but they are, they are becoming more skeptical and more concerned about how we're going to sustain some of the programs we've had. You know, we've experienced record growth, and that record growth has transmitted to record spending. And unfortunately, we built some organizations and had some long-term commitments out of that money, and that's going to make it a little difficult to balance a budget and to meet all those targets that we've had. There's some major issues that this legislature must deal with, and I think it's fully recognized that ballot measure 110 has not been a success as it was portrayed, and it's not working as it should have. I believe there's, there's a lot of agreement that we're going to have to go figure out how to make that a much better program, because it's not working. You know, we took money away, we, that ballot measure took money away from the counties. The revenue, or revenue received from the marijuana and distributed to a lot of law enforcement, that money has left the counties. And this, and that left a big hole for you folks. We patched some of it a little bit with the last, with the special session, but not enough to, to cover your hole. And I think we have to go fix that. I mean, we have to, we have to figure out how to, the support that the state gives you is not in the form of grants, but it's in the form of actual budget allocations, because you can't build a law enforcement organization on grants. So I, I hope, and that my colleagues and I agree, and we've all had these conversations, that we need to relook at how we've identified measure 110, because when you look on paper and the concept, it was a great idea, but it's not working. We're getting further behind in those areas, so I think, I think we're going to fix that. Another major issue for Deschutes County and other counties, but I think it's probably a bigger issue for Deschutes County, was the impact of Senate Bill 762, which is a wildfire map. That map, that was a huge bill, and it made a lot of changes to how the state of Oregon addresses wildfire. Some of them very good changes. I spoke a link to that bill. I spent 30 years fighting fire for the federal government. I know a little bit about wildfire suppression. The program's coming out with the increased capacity for the state fire marshal, the increased capacity to, to move those monies out to local departments has been very successful. You can look back at our fire season for this year, and, and we've done a much better job, or we've had, whether it's because of 762, it's because of weather pattern changes, unknown. I'll take credit for 762, says it made some changes. Some of the problems with 762, as it was identified in its original legislation, was that it developed a wildfire risk map. I was very concerned when that map came out, that it was a top-down map with no local involvement. That's what it was. And it was a total failure when it came out. The map was not reflective. It had no local control, and it characterized and categorized properties throughout the state as high and extreme without ever, anyone ever visiting those properties and looking at them. I led a pretty hard effort to, to stop the map implementation and withdraw it and start again. And through conversations with the state forester, the Oregon Department of Forestry Fire Chief, they weren't really happy with that because they liked their map, but it was a failure. So the problem with that is it relates to Deschutes County is Senate Bill 191?
391.
391, 391, the ADUs. And because that Senate Bill 391 had a component in there that you must have this risk, risk part of it. So we have to figure out how to fix that. We have to divorce those two programs together, and I think there's a means to probably get there. Full disclosure, I have an ADU on my property that I'm waiting to get this implemented. I'd like to have two, so. I did, but I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty big issue. Not all counties have these issues, not all counties support it. But I know it's a big issue in Deschutes County and a few others, and we need to fix that. I believe in wildfire risk mapping. I think we have to do that, but the way that works is it starts at the lowest level. And, and landowners are given credit for work that they have done. And the current process as it was rolled out did not reflect that at all. I have landowners that spent thousands of dollars on hardening their property for wildfire risk. They came out in extreme. None of that work was credited, and that was a terrible mistake.
Senator, we did an extensive process of evaluating with our planning commission and, you know, community input on the wildfire map for Deschutes County. And in the end, it boiled down to we're probably at a high level across the whole county. And you could slice and dice that, but any wind-driven event in a hot, dry day could really jump in from forested areas to grassy areas and all that. So we already know we live in a forested, fire-prone area. It's natural, though. You know, I mean, 150, 200 years ago, lightning strike, fire, large ponderosa forest, it would just walk across the forest floor. And we're not seeing that natural regime anymore. My point is, we've already accepted, we, the Board of Commissioners has accepted, we're in a high category. So for this, yeah, debate about what's high, medium, and low, we'll see, we'll see where it goes.
Yeah, I'd just like to.
And, and you're right, Commissioner, right? I have been promised that the next generation map, map two, is what I'm calling it, will, will start at the bottom and come forward. Local planners, local, local commissioners will have an integral role in development of the map. The polygons and some of the criteria that OSU used will still be there. OSU will certainly probably do the final map, but, but as the maps become in development stages and they come out, they will come from the local level, and that's where they.
We, we actually have quite a leg up on that. The, as part of the wildfire advisory committee process that occurred here prior to my time as Commissioner, the, you know, the Board of Commissioners established a committee to evaluate the changes that ultimately were, were made through SB 762, requiring defensible space across the entire high and extreme risk area and requiring fire-resistant building materials in those high and, high and extreme risk areas for, for new construction as well. And what we learned from that process was that the, the people of Deschutes County supported those things even at a cost of up to $6,000 for, you know, of additional fire-resistant building material measures for new construction in, in our community. We, there was the advisory committee, they did, they conducted public surveys. So there's, there's a pretty broad support for the kinds of changes that those maps completed through SB 762 will require. In addition, they, they assembled three, at least three different scenario maps of high and extreme risk for our, for our community, which, you know, now are, you know, if you want to look at maps that were built at the, at the, at the county scale, at the local level, to compare those with some of those initial SB 762 maps there, those are available. So I mean, that might be an interesting comparison for policymakers to make. The, one of the things that people are not, some people are not going to be excited to hear is that the, the, the maps that the county built did show quite possibly more area as high, high and extreme risk than the, the maps that OSU and ODF put together for Deschutes County. And, and different areas, you know, there's, there's been a great deal of concern about irrigated crop lands being classified as high risk, and our maps probably showed less of those as high risk, but they showed a lot more other areas as high risk than those, those, that first iteration of state maps did. So I, it'll be an interesting discussion to, to, to watch and, and for us to weigh in on. But I do, you know, one of the other things I did want to say is I, I attended the, the open house that ODF and OSU held here in Deschutes County to talk to all those landowners who had received letters declaring them in the high and extreme risk category and who wanted to contest that. And, and one of the things I learned was that there, there will be a lot of properties that get classified as high and extreme risk, that when the, the state fire marshal or their representative goes out to the property to look at it with, with the property owner, they'll take a look around, they'll say, you are at higher extreme risk because, just because of the ignition potential around you. That doesn't mean that you haven't already mitigated that risk. So, you know, you could very, you could have inspector-type people showing up at those irrigated crop land areas saying, yes, you are in high risk because of the ignition possibility, not because of the anticipated flame lengths. And looking around at your irrigated farm, farm here, you've done pretty much everything you could, so you don't have to do anything more, even though you're in high risk. So there is a, a real, I think there's a perception issue that people have that, you know, just because I'm in high risk, you know, big brother is going to come and tell me to do stuff, when the people who have, have been doing the work, they will, that's the point that they'll get credit. They won't necessarily get credit during the, the mapping process, but they will get credit at the point where, you know, people are being required to do more or, or not.
Commissioner, you're right. I, I absolutely believe there, there's a tremendous part of this state that is in high risk, high and extreme. And I, I believe that Deschutes County has a leg up over most counties, simply because of the work that you have done. And when, when we're all done, there will be a lot of, a lot of areas that are high and extreme, but they really are high and extreme. And, and the mitigation that will be required based on that, if it's done, they will already have that done, and they will get that reassurance. Now, there was, there's a lot of discussion about insurance rates, you know, and I've heard repeatedly from the insurance commissioner, no, that's not true. And then I've heard, I've seen repeatedly from people that says, look, here's my rates, or I was canceled. So there, there's still some work to do on that. Rates are going to go up. The risks are out there. Most insurance companies have aggressively worked on that themselves, and, and that's okay. It's okay if you're extreme, if you are really extreme. And, and what, what I want to make sure is that people that have done the work for that mitigation that you spoke about get that credit for that mitigation, so they know that they've done the best they can to harden their property. And, and it's just not going to be a top-down process. I was really disappointed when, when the maps first came out, I had, I requested, and we, we put together a meeting in Burns. And, and the OSU people that, that did the mapping was there, the state fire marshal's office was there with the state fire marshal. Oregon Department of Forestry folks were there, the wild, the state wildfire commission committee was there. And, and we spent three hours talking about the processes and how we got there. We went out and looked at thousands of acres of irrigated ground that was listed as extreme. And we talked about, and after about a four-and-a-half-hour meeting, as we were breaking and leaving, the state says, oh, by the way, we're sending out letters next week to all these landowners. I, I think they jumped the gun. So the process is valid. Deschutes County is well ahead of most other counties, and, and your work needs to be counted and applied to the future maps, and I think they will. And that's, but when, when, when we're all done, there will be a lot of extreme ground, and that's, it is what it is. And people need to understand how to harden it, and if they've done it, they just need to get the credit, so. And, and I think we rolled it out because of a, of an artificial date that was put in the bill. ODF had to meet the language, meet the bill, and they did. They recognized that there was problems with it, and they're going to restart it and, and do it the right way without an artificial date, says you have to have this done by June 30th. So hopefully, you all and your planners will be much more involved in the process. I'm sorry, I'll quit talking.
No, no, I so appreciate it, because I worry about insurance, insurance rates. If people pull out of the state, you know, so far, you could say this fire season has been definitely less than prior year. But I, I just worry that with, when you start looking at things and then the insurance companies come in, that what, what's that really going to do to our plans? And I would hate to think that we'd have to have an Oregon State Fair Plan.
I have been assured, and I believe the state will say, if your rates have gone up significantly, and it's based on fire risk, that the insurance companies will have to provide what that criteria is. They'll have to provide their risk work, instead of saying, "We're relying on an outside party's map, and we're going to use that." They cannot do that. If the insurance company has a plan, which most of them do, they bring that forward. And that's what it is. But just an arbitrary, "We're tripling your rates," or "We're canceling your policy" based on a state map is not valid, and they will have to justify how they're doing it.
Yeah, no, I do believe that there was some drafting off of the state map going on by insurance companies who, they have their own maps, they've done their own work, and they just thought that was a convenient moment to kind of hide behind something.
I absolutely agree with you. So, we're going to remove that ability to hide behind that, because that's just not right.
Right.
And if they want to raise it, they have to have a good plan in place and with full documentation and justification.
Yeah, and I really like your line of thought about people getting credit from their insurance companies for what they've done. You know, I don't know how the state program could be set up to basically kind of provide that flow of information. You know, we had this requirement, people came out to check it out, these people did what they needed to do, and insurance industry, we want you to know that. And hopefully, that could translate into some kind of, you know, two-tiered rate system for areas that are higher extreme risk.
No, I was just going to say, we had the personal experience of having a fire go around my house and lost one tree. We were supposed to go to USAA, and, you know, three weeks later, and they said, "Absolutely no way." So, when the insurance company says, "Sorry, but no," I feel like the consumer really doesn't have a lot of power. So, I feel like we have to be really careful with what we're doing. And by this, Senator Finley, are you thinking that perhaps Senate Bill 391, because the 762 doesn't have a date now, that we could maybe implement things sooner than later?
That would be my intent. And I've had some conversations with some of my colleagues, and we can't do anything until the legislature convenes, but we need to put an emergency clause on a fix for 391 and address those issues. Because I believe at light speed, a new map is a year away.
The really simple patch that a couple people have proposed locally is for people who want to proceed with their ADU before it's really clear whether they're in higher extreme-risk category, if they just assume they are and they adopt the fire-resistant building requirements for, you know, for that classification, then they can proceed.
I would be happy to entertain a legislative concept to do that, if you'd provide me some of your stuff. You, Deschutes County is far ahead of the rest of the state in that, and that would be a good patch. And it could be applied, it's not a one-off for Deschutes County, it'll be applied statewide, and I'd be happy to carry that forward.
Thank you so much. That's great news, because I believe we're almost 5,000 homes short in our county.
You know, throughout my travels and throughout my conversations, whether in my district or out of my district, housing is an issue for everyone, and we have to figure out a better path forward. We have to figure out what part of our land use laws are limiting that and how we can address those. I believe Senate Bill 100 was one of the most forward-thinking bills that ever was. That's the bill that developed its current land use laws. Because I drive in Idaho quite regularly, and I see incredible farm ground that's paved over with houses on it, and I do not support that. But I think our pendulum has swung a little too far, and we have to add some common sense to it. There's a lot of ground around here that would make great development potential and not great producing ground. So, we have to figure out how to get that. The first fix of our homeless issue and our housing crisis is available land, and we have to figure out how to make that more readily available. And I'm committed to continue to work towards that.
Definitely, that is a concern. I mean, if we're migrating into discussions of housing availability and affordability, I do want to emphasize that land supply is a factor, it is, but it's not the only factor.
Oh, no, absolutely not. I can, I relate to across the border, because I can see Idaho from my backyard, is, you know, the fastest-growing regions in the country is in Payette County in Idaho. They can go from, I think I would like to have a subdivision out here, to construction of the subdivision within three months. You know, you can't do that in Oregon very well. You know, we trip over our regulations and our controls more than we need to. I'm not advocating relaxing any safety concerns or something else, but we have to figure out how to do a better job at that. We got, we have housing codes, we have requirements that we're putting on there that are nonsensical and-
But again, to go back to the thought that land supply is, and regulatory, you know, land use regulatory constraints are a factor, but not the only factor.
That's exactly right.
I mean, we have, the city of Redmond, for example, has a huge amount of land within its UGB that is available for development. Their problem is that they can't find the money to build out the infrastructure to enable that. And, I mean, we're having a certain amount of struggle with that in Southeast Bend, which is, you know, where a lot of the area that is still available within Bend's current UGB exists. You know, if you don't have the infrastructure and you don't have a way to pay for it, then, you know-
That's a major factor, Commissioner, you're absolutely correct. There's a lot of issues. We've got to look at all of them and figure out how we can deal with the system development charges or components of that, with the development of our infrastructure.
Well, the system development charges are how we attempt to pay for that infrastructure, unless-
That also significantly affects affordability. So, there's got to be a balance, and we have to, we can't just focus on one thing, we've got to look at all of them. And I believe that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Yeah. And sorry, we interrupted you when you were-
No, no, you're fine. I have no hard fix. I just want to talk about some of the priorities that I see coming up, we're obviously going to work on. Hopefully, housing will be huge. All three governors, so whichever one gets it, is all talking about the homeless crisis and those issues, mental health crisis and those issues that go with that. We all have to be prepared to roll up our sleeves and figure out how to plot a path forward.
So, we've got a couple topics we can jump to a little-
Okay.
So, we're going to build a three-story courthouse expansion here. The legislature provided us, with coordination with the governor, a couple new judges, so we're going to be building out a facility here. And we're in that classic situation where, oh, it's going to be about 20-something million, and then it jumped to 40-something million. So, inflationary costs have really bit us on that one. So, just possible partnership with the state for one-time capital. You know, I'm sure there'll be some discussions like that. You know, we're going to build it, we're working on it, a lot of moving parts there. But of course, the cost has just escalated way past what we were looking at just a few years ago. So, we'll look for partnerships there. We've got, last night, we were at our fair board meeting, and we talked about a land swap that we're working on with Department of State Lands. The edge of our fairgrounds property, swapping some land with the Department of State Lands for land that's inside the city of Redmond, industrial, commercial properties that we've been waiting for many, many years on this. So, it's just one of those topics that, when it's time, let's get it done, and it could be success. You know, we had a robust discussion last night at our meeting about, you know, why isn't this quite happening yet? And as I say, Commissioner Chang may jump in here at any moment as I say this, but it's just political will. You know, we've been talking about it for many, many years. And it's a swap, Department of State Lands, the governor, the treasurer, secretary of state, you know, their staff, we've negotiated it down to the, you know, decimal places about how this should happen, but then it just hasn't happened. So, it's a simple land swap, pending at DSL. If you ever hear about it, please help us.
Well, you know, and I think, and I absolutely understand that. There's a time when we need to have intervention and to help with that, and that needs to occur. As far as your courthouse, your capital construction issues, now's the time, we're starting to develop capital construction requests. I have semi-annual conversations with your presiding judge. We've talked about these issues a little bit. They're a huge issue. There's projects throughout this state that have started out, you know, a few years ago, and they were funded, as they start the implementation and the construction, they're all woefully short. That's an issue that we have to address. We've got to go back to the capital construction and fully fund those projects. I mean, I fully supported adding the two judges to your circuit. And we knew at the time there was going to be capital construction based on that and needs from that. And everyone was pretty well-supported, but now it's woefully short. So, we have to fix that.
And it's going to happen, you know, we have capacity at Deschutes County, but as I say, it's just those escalating costs are the pain point at this point in time.
You know, and I seen this morning that the chief justice has announced her retirement, you know, and she's been a strong advocate for that in the past, so we'll have, I hope we have no bump in the road in the support for that project to move it forward. But as we go through in the legislative process, we will, I will be developing our capital construction list, so if you come to some of those, let me know, and we can certainly have a discussion about it.
Well, we can probably come up with some more asks.
I would assume so.
But this one, we're committed to, and it is going to be built in a few years.
And this is, I believe we've all committed to that one, Commissioner. I mean, this is a state, as well as the state needs to help with that.
It's made such an incredible difference with our legal system here in Deschutes County, besides just the court, the ease of legal documents through, I've heard from people in the community. So, we needed it, you know, we needed three judges, and thank goodness, we received two. It's been unbelievable. And then I did hear that the Terabon Project, I was talking to Gary Farnsworth about that, that that's going to jump up maybe another 10,000, but he said, "Patty, don't worry, I've got that covered." Mr. Deschutes County is actually contributing 10,000 to that project.
10 million.
Excuse me, 10 million. Let's get to the right-
Yeah, right decimal place.
It's not 10 million, it's 10 million. Anyway, you know, that's another jump. But thank goodness, we have, you know, the North Quarter Project starting, and there will be four roundabouts when you drive through on Highway 20 over to Salem. Eventually, it's going to be, it'll be interesting. You might want to go around Johnson Road or something, just kind of-
Well, one of the best things that ever happened to me is that I was finally, someone finally told me the best way to go from my house to Salem without driving through Bend.
And what did you do?
You know, I'd take off there and go around the old Tumalo Road and come back around, so that's 30 minutes off my trip. But it picked up another couple roundabouts in the way, so.
We're going to add more. So, another note, Northwest Policy Advocates, Doug Riggs is going to be our lobbyist, so Deschutes, and we've already had a sit-down meeting with him, so that's going to be kind of a central Oregon alignment with our Central Oregon Cities Organization also, if you've seen the Koko people. So, that's, you know, who we'll be representing. When you see Doug Riggs and his partners and staff there, that'll be Deschutes County's lobbying efforts this year also.
And I attend, or I attempt to attend as many of the Koko meetings that I can. They're very informative, but I will tell you, and we're going to go back to in-person committee meetings next session, there's nothing more impactful, in my eye as a legislator, to look at and see the actual, not lobbyists, but the actual people providing testimony. So, and you all have come over, I would encourage you to be prepared to do that again. As we talked about those measures specifically, is to come on over and have a cup of coffee and provide in-person testimony whenever you can.
Yep, looking forward to it.
It is so important. It's really, losing that in 2021.
Yeah, I'm, you know, the building's still under construction, there's still a lot of it going to be closed. Access is going to be troublesome at best, but all of the hearing rooms will be open. The hallway between the two senate, or the senate and the house, will be open. The rotunda and the rest of the stuff will be closed. The access will all be on the south entrance, I believe. But, you know, we were, we got the calendar yesterday, and they will all be in-person committee hearings, which I look forward to that.
I think it's always worth it, you know, for your three minutes of testimony to do it in person, so thank you for sharing that with us.
Before we wind up, I wanted to make sure to circle back to Measure 110 and just give a couple of thoughts from my perspective. As you know, the county is a law enforcement agency, you know, through the sheriff's office. It is a justice system through, you know, the DA's office, through our support for the circuit court, et cetera, parole and probation. It is also a behavioral health agency and the local mental health authority for our community. And as we look at Measure 110, there are things that are not working, and then there are things that we're not sure whether they're going to work or not. And I, you know, basically, the way I see it, it's, Measure 110 was two parts. One, people who have substance use challenges, let's not make them into criminals and throw them in jail, let's try and figure out how to get them into treatment. And then the other piece of Measure 110, which is where all our cannabis tax revenue went, was into new treatment capacity. And it was incredibly, incredibly, the state was incredibly slow in deploying those funds. I mean, we literally are, we are just now at the point where we're looking to hire those behavioral health specialists who are going to work on substance use disorders and treatment and tracking interventions and tracking people into help. And so, that piece of Measure 110, I hope, because it took so long for those funds to deploy, I hope we don't prejudge that piece of Measure 110 as a failure, that we actually give that component an opportunity to demonstrate whether it can have an impact or not in, you know, helping a whole lot of people deal with their substance use disorders and get their lives back on track. So, you know, I definitely agree that we want to look at some fixes to, you know, tweaks to Measure 110, particularly looking at the question of, if we're going to, if we're going to take away criminal prosecution, what is our leverage, what is our tool to drive people who need treatment to get treatment? How do we incentivize that?
Commissioner, I'll tell you, of the first 1,200 citations that were issued, which were suggested to get, you call into this number and you start in Agent Services, there were seven phone calls made out of the first 1,200 citations.
Yeah, no, the-
We have to do better.
The driver, it's not working. But the treatment piece, I really do think we don't know whether it's going to work or not yet.
And there are people a whole lot smarter than I am that are going to figure that one out. But I agree, we have to get a better handle on treatment. And whether we're in the right path or not, I can't answer that, but I hope people are looking at that to deal with that.
Yeah.
And I really hope that the change of administration and the change of executive-level appointments and all those, don't slow that down, that look and that path forward for those folks, because they deserve all the help they can get.
Yeah, and I would also, you know, you were talking about, like, kind of, does it make sense to take marijuana tax revenue and invest it in all this treatment? I mean, you know, does it make sense to take marijuana tax revenue and invest in treatment capacity for a whole bunch of other different controlled substances? You know, I don't know if that makes sense either, but the investment, I do believe that the investment is needed. So, if, you know, as we look at tweaking or changing Measure 110, I hope that commitment, that, you know, you just said yourself that, you know, you think the treatment is important, so that the investment in the treatment is there regardless of what happens.
My objection to the removal of the marijuana funding from that program is that we have emboldened the illegal marijuana trade. Counties to the south of us have huge issues. I think it spills into your county as well. But, you know, you talk to residents of Jackson and Josephine and Clamath County, it's just exploded, and it's actually very unsafe in a lot of areas. And we've gutted their sheriff's departments that were relying on that money by redirecting it, and we have to go fix that.
Yeah, no, to, our sheriff's office just made it a- Yeah, no, I, to, our sheriff's office just made it a much-needed investment in additional capacity for, you know, black market marijuana production and, and sales distribution.
Yeah, all the stuff that goes with that production is, it's just, it's, it's really mind-boggling and it's very scary, the stuff that goes with that. So we have to help.
We had 49 greenhouses out in Alfalfa last year that were shut down. Mexican cartel. We had another illegal operation out in Sisters using well water with outdoor marijuana. So, you know, we've had our share too.
Yeah, no, we.
Yeah, it's a challenge. It really, it really is.
Up until making that additional investment, our sheriff's office essentially was triaging just the most, the largest, most egregious black market operations. And there's a, you know, quite a long, quite a long list of deferred inspections that they weren't getting to. So that this, this, this investment that they made is going to help, but it's, it's probably not nearly enough. And they had to, they had to dial up their assessed property tax rates for the Sheriff's Office District, the rural district number two, in order to do that. So, so yes, state support, state support to address that statewide, national, international problem would.
And I think it is, and I know that there's been conversations at the federal level for some more support in that regard as well. So I, this is your schedule. I'll do what you guys want to do.
Go all morning.
Well, thank you so much and you'll be in town for the next little bit. So thank you for coming into our meeting today.
And please don't hesitate to reach out if I can do something or, and I know you're, you're not shy about that and I appreciate that.
The wonderful thing is that you can call Senator Finley at 7:00 AM because he's over in Idaho at 8:00 AM.
Yeah, I, you know, I like to say I have, I have my own time zone in some regards. But yeah, I appreciate the conversations and I appreciate the help and, and please let me know if I can do more.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in today. It was really appreciated. Looks like you're going to be incredibly busy.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three. Cody Smith.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Cody.
For the record, Cody Smith, County Engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. Board, before you this morning is a license agreement with the Ike Abis Trust regarding some right-of-way for 11th Street in Terabon. Now, the Ike Abis Trust owns property at 925 Central Avenue in Terabon, which also abuts 11th Street. The property owner has various differing, different items that encroach within the established right-of-way for 11th Street that are also in conflict with the proposed improvements to 11th Street as part of the US 97 Terabon Project. Those, those encroaching items include various sheds and other smaller structures, some above-ground propane tanks, fences, some other non-fixed type objects. After meeting with Mr. Abis, the owner, the owner and trustee for the property back in June, the road department prepared the license agreement that's before you this morning. Under this license agreement, the property owner would be required to remove the more egregious encroaching objects. I'm going to bring up the map here that's included in the license agreement. So on the map on your screen here, let me, let me make this full screen. So on the map on your screen there, the, the area that's highlighted in red there, all of the objects that are within that area will have to be removed by the end of this calendar year, by December 31st of this year. While all of the objects that are in the area that's highlighted in green there on the map can continue to remain in that area and will be subject to this license agreement. The, the, the intent of this license agreement is that it would cover us through the end of calendar year 2025. The road department's intent is that by that date, the Terabon Project will be complete. And upon completion of the project, the road department would be presenting documents for vacation proceedings for that license area so that upon completion of the project, the county could, would actually vacate this right-of-way in green and that would actually become part of the Abis property there. Just a couple of photos showing you what these encroachments look like. So here we are looking north on 11th Street. In that picture, you can see that fence that's right up close to the roadway there, a propane tank that's, you know, today, obviously, kind of dangerously close to the existing road. This, this is standing further north and now looking south, just another shot of that, that fence and sheds and other things that are, that are within that right-of-way that are the items that are anticipated to be removed under this agreement. So we have to get an agreement, some, an agreement to this effect in place here soon in order for ODOT to be able to certify the right-of-way for the project as they move into the right-of-way phase for the US 97 Terabon Project. So this, this license agreement will satisfy that. It satisfies some immediate safety concerns that the road department has with some of these encroaching objects in the right-of-way. And ultimately, it seems to satisfy the property owner here as well because it's, it's providing for him to more or less immediately remove those more dangerous objects while still being able to retain some of his, some of the shop buildings and other facilities that are located within that, that right-of-way that ultimately we, the road department, don't believe will need to be used for any long-term needs in regards to operations of the public road system there in Terabon. So with that, I'll, I'll pass it back to the board and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Colby. Thank you for that analysis of what the property is and thank you for the pictures. A really, a picture is worth a thousand words, as they say. And the fact that that propane tank is right there. Are there any other comments?
I'll just say thank you very much. And I'm sure this is, you know, the evolution of the footprint of that property owner over time. I'm sure they're not looking for, you know, where exactly that, they hadn't had to look for where exactly that edge was. So now that there's development happening, you know, looking for that compromise, asking for specific, you know, cleanup and working with that licensed area. So it seems like a really good compromise. I was up there going to a pumpkin patch on Sunday and man, the area is just gridlocked in all directions. So that was just amazing seeing it.
Yeah, Cody, I do, I just want to understand a little bit better, like, how we end up in a situation like this. I mean, do you have a sense of how long ago all of those, all those structures, you know, were built by, by this landowner and kind of, you know? I guess what I'm trying to ask is, you know, was there a period where people just thought about the county's road right-of-way a lot differently? You know, like that it wasn't really a consideration or a thing that people thought about? Or is, I mean, well, I guess I would also ask you, I know, I know on some, some smaller roads, it's still not, you know, there still isn't a whole lot of awareness about the county's right-of-way and the, and the need to kind of leave space open for future infrastructure and, and, yeah, road maintenance needs and other things. But I, you know, I just want, kind of want to understand how we end up in a, in a, in a place like this.
Yeah, I guess to answer the more broad question there, I mean, I think it's, it's going to be case by case what's, what's happening in, on different roads and different parts of the county. I, I don't know the complete story in this case even, but I can, I can, you know, give, give my best guess here. So the, I got the map back up here. So the generally north-south alignment of the right-of-way there, I mean, you'll notice obviously the road shifts, shifts more to the east there and there's a curvature there. So that, that due north-south right-of-way, that, that, there was a 60-foot right-of-way created for 11th Street with the old 1909 Hillman plat. My understanding, I don't, I don't think there was ever a roadway alignment that actually followed that. Some years later, the old Dallas, California highway came through, which was actually state highway. And that generally followed the alignment of 11th Street there that, and part of what that's doing is it's curving around a rock outcropping there that some, some of these encroaching objects exist up on top of that, that rock outcropping. So that, that, that new right-of-way for the Dallas, California highway was established over there. I, you know, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember what year that was specifically, many decades ago. But meanwhile, nothing was done with that original right-of-way that was established for 11th Street with the Hillman plat. I think there was, you know, just, just historically, there's probably a, a, a lack of understanding of knowing where that actual right-of-way boundary was at that time as, over the years, this, this property to the west developed and ultimately encroached into that right-of-way. With the US 97 Terabon Project, obviously, there's been a substantial effort here to, to do a, you know, a significant right-of-way and boundary retracement survey for, for the entire kind of, you know, core area of Terabon here. And that's, so that's really what, what brought this to the forefront and brought this to the road department's attention. It just, it wasn't something that was, that was on our radar, that awareness that we, that we had these, these substantial encroachments in the right-of-way. But obviously, now that we're delivering a, a pretty major capital project here, certainly we're aware of it now.
Got it, okay. Thank you, thank you for that background. I mean, yeah, this, this does seem like a, like a, a good strategy solution to move forward and, and, you know, enable the project to proceed as fast as possible. So I'm supportive. I just was, you know, as, we, we see right-of-way issues on a regular basis. I'm just still trying to get a better understanding of, you know, how, how these issues develop.
I mean, I, you know, I, there's, there's certainly a part of this that can be attributed. You know, we have roads that were established even in the 1800s, right-of-ways that were established into the 1800s. And it wasn't until, you know, the, the last decade or two where we have all these great tools with GIS mapping and be able to, you know, to compile and display a large amount of data and historic records all in one spot, you know? 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, we didn't have those types of tools. So that there wasn't, you know, often there wasn't that much awareness of where these boundaries necessarily existed without having to do, you know, for every one of them, a substantial research project through, through deed records and surveying. So that certainly, I think in general, that, you know, some of these, these right-of-way issues can be attributed to that, where we run into them across the county.
Fair enough, thank you.
Well, with that, I'll move board signature and approval of document number 2022-762, a license agreement with Ike Abis Trust for the right-of-way encroachments on 11th Street in Terabon.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of决议, yes. So thank you, Colby, Cody. So looks like we're doing this right on a timely basis. Keep that project going forward. Okay, we're now at item number four. I believe Whitney's going to be with Trigby.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator, and I'm joined by Trigby Bulkin, our HR analyst who helps manage benefits here at the county. We're here today coming to the board with employee health benefits plan renewal considerations for the 2023 plan year. And the county's Employee Benefits Advisory Committee, Eback, we'll refer to them as Eback through our presentation today, voted 14 to 1 in support of the proposed plan changes and the renewals that are before the board today. So there's a, an extensive memo that was included in the board's materials today as well as a matrix. And my plan, if it works for the board, is to talk a little bit about the renewals that are included in the recommendation and then to segue into the proposed plan changes that are before the board for consideration. Does that work, Chair?
It works. Thank you, Whitney.
Perfect. So as you saw in the materials in today's packet, there are five renewals that are included in the recommendation that's before the board today. Two of those renewals have rate increases associated with them, and those are our TPA and our stop-loss provider. So as the board likely saw in the materials, the renewal with our stop-loss provider will result in a 5% increase. And the renewal with our TPA, Pacific Source, will result in a 3.1% increase. And so when we look at the five renewals that are being recommended to the board as well as the proposed plan changes and current claims trends, we're expecting that overall annual employer costs are going to rise about 9.1%. And so that's kind of a brief overview of, of renewals that are associated with the recommendations today. Does the board have any questions about any of the renewals?
So just the terminology you see, so the employer's going to see 9.1 increase? That's the whole plan, it's going to see 9.1 increase on those, those two services?
No, the 9.1% is inclusive of all five renewals, current claims trends, as well as the, the benefit changes that are being proposed in the matrix.
Well, just, yeah, so I guess my other, that's the plan cost, not employee, direct employee cost.
We're not proposing any modifications to employee cost.
I've seen inflation where it's said employee costs are going up 30%, you know, not on our private plan, but I mean, out there with inflation, that it seems to, medical things have really been hit hard. So if we're looking at almost 10%, okay? Go ahead.
And so also included in the board's materials today are some proposed benefits plan changes. And those are outlined in the memo that was included in today's packet. And I'm, we're happy to go through each of the proposed plan changes individually. Or if the board would prefer and has questions on individual changes, that's fine too. So I just would defer to the board on if you'd like a comprehensive overview or if you'd like to have discussion or questions on specific items.
I have a question about item number one. Okay, so are we, we're going to make this more, cutting down the enrollment period? Is that what we're working on?
So my thought, maybe we'll just go through each one of them because each one of them is interesting, but we don't need to spend a lot of time on them. So I'm, I'm just advocating to go through all of them.
I mean, I was just thinking, is this, I know that our employee plan is one of the, according to surveys, people of, that work here are really happy with our employee plan for health insurance. So, but we're trying to make this more available in a, in a shorter period of time then for our new employee?
This, a good example of the change that's outlined in number one is someone that has a start date that's mid-month. So maybe I start employment with the county today. I'm going to wait my 30 days and then I'm going to, my, I will become covered by the health plan on the first of the following month. So if we're using today, that would be December 1. With this change that's being proposed, I would be covered on November 1, so earlier. And if I had a start date of October 1st, I would be covered on that first day of employment of October 1st. So it's helping employees have that coverage sooner than they have it now.
I think that's a great change. Thank you.
Me too.
The second recommended change has to do with COVID testing and prescriptions. There, this would revert to regular plan language and end an amendment that was required during the pandemic. And essentially, this, these services would revert back to coverage that exists for what we would typically see covered during the plan, but kind of doing away with that exception, the amendment that was required during the pandemic. Number three is a change to the provider network. This is a change from the Pacific Source Voyager Network to the Pacific Source Navigator Network. HR did an analysis on kind of impact to members with this change. And it's a very minimal estimated impact of folks who see providers that maybe were covered under the existing network but wouldn't be covered under the new network. I think it's about 36 members that would have an impact. Go ahead.
There would be no local impact. So all of the providers that are here in Central Oregon are on both the Voyager and the Navigator network. So there'd be no impact locally. It's just to a few folks that traveled out of the area to see specialists or maybe have. or maybe had an injury or an accident outside of the area. There is a limited number, excuse me, of providers that are no longer, would no longer be in, in network. And we would reach out to those members and make sure that they were notified of that. But it didn't look like any ongoing care. It was just kind of those one-off occurrences.
And I don't think any primary care impacts that we were aware of, just those specialists. And then, um, the recommendation on item number four has to do with, um, removing a plan exclusion for abortion services. So our current plan excludes abortion services, supplies, care, treatment in connection with an abortion, unless the life of the mother is endangered by the continued pregnancy or the pregnancy is the result of rape or incest. And this recommendation in item four, um, would remove that exclusion.
So as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, and it was in our minutes, I do support removing this, uh, decision point from our, uh, you know, health benefits plan. Uh, we did talk about this last year. Uh, so, uh, you know, I can move now or move in a few moments, however, we're going to do this as a slate. So nothing's changed from last year. And then, you know, this is a, um, a topic that we, yeah, we, as I say, we've
Yes.
discussed previously.
We have discussed it.
Yeah, well, I, I will just restate that, um, we are hearing from employees that they would like to have this benefit. The Eback voted fourteen to one, uh, to support this change. And, uh, the cost is very small. Uh, benchmarking, you know, comparing to other employers' plans indicates that we are out of step with most other employers on, on this issue. Um, so, uh, I guess if, with those three considerations that the employee, our, our employees are asking for this, the cost is small, um, e- excluding this benefit, um, puts us out of step with other employers. I'd, I'd like, uh, my fellow commissioners to state their specific reasons for wanting to remove this.
So, uh, I do support the fact that we are the political front end of Deschutes County. I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't advocate for Eback to be able to, to have to pull up this specific item and, you know, debate it on its political front. So I mean, I support having it here in front of us as a board of commissioners and, uh, you know, coming to the same conclusion as they have before and the values I bring to this office.
Yes, I would agree with the values and the fact that our plan is in compliance, um, per legal and it has been grandfathered in. I, I think there is, that's what I could do. I would continue it as it has been grandfathered in. I think that's why, um, sometimes you have to make, you have to follow what you feel is important. And I feel that, um, our grandfathered plan is fine according to the memo. The current plan excludes abortion services, treatment, unless the life of the mother is endangered by the continued pregnancy. That was, I don't know if you've mentioned that, or the pregnancy is a result of rape or incest. So if they have a relationship with a doctor, um, apparently, I think that's, that's where I'd like it to stand. So do we need to remove it at this moment in time?
I guess, I guess the one other thing I'd like to say about this is that, um, uh, denying this benefit to our employees, uh, is not going to make it so that employees have more or less abortions. All this would do is, um, is send the message to our employees that if they need to make that hard and difficult decision, um, we are not supporting them in, in, in doing that. Um, and we are, we are financially, uh, you know, putting them out on their own. Uh, and, uh, you know, because I really do not believe that this is going to, uh, result in more or less abortions by employees and their families. Um, I think it's really inappropriate for us to deny this benefit.
Thank you for your opinion. Uh, you know, it's, uh, offensive sometimes when you say we need to explain our position and that our positions are wrong. So that's where we're at.
The, um, good news that I might point out is that in 2014, the Affordable Care Act made all birth control free. Um, I had a long conversation with a doctor in the community. And she said that significantly made a difference in the amount of abortions that were happening. So, um, that's, you know, that's good to know. And people are happy with our health plan. That was number one or number two on the survey. So I believe that they'll still be happy with the fact that Deschutes County does offer, um, excellent healthcare insurance. So.
So I support going through the next couple of items and then I'll just, uh, you know, move approval minus that item number four.
Okay, all right, go ahead. Number five.
Yep, um, actually, I'm going to group five and six together. So these are, um, language updates. Um, they don't result in changes to benefits or coverage. So five is, uh, plan language updates throughout the document. And six is, uh, more specific to, um, when a member requests a brand name and generic is available and how that is factored into, um, Out of Pocket Max. So those are language cleanups. And seven, um, is a change to, um, mail order pharmacy. So a switch from, um, who's being used currently, um, to a different, um, pharmacy. And it's, it looks like there's pretty minimal impact with that change. So those are the, the seven items and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I'll just acknowledge, I mean, we've got a great health plan. This was put in place, self-funded for healthcare many years ago, you know, before my time. Uh, you know, we've had this health benefits reserve that we've been able to keep in place. Uh, you know, we've got a, a robust health plan for Deschutes County employees. And that's what we're talking about here and the dependents. So it's a great opportunity to provide the healthcare very cost effective in today's climate, so.
Right. When you hear that inflation for other medic plans is up to thirty percent and if we're keeping our, our nine, at nine point one, that's, you know, and we knew that, um, COVID took, what, a couple of years off of people's lives? The life expectancy now has gone down. So we really need to get our employees healthier. And I'm really glad that we're going to have them covered earlier. I think that will be another, um, excellent benefit to provide, since I noticed you did not add pet insurance again. You know, on a lighter note.
Oh, would that be under health? So, uh,
It would be. It's pet health.
With that, I'll move approval of these recommended changes, items one through seven, minus item number four.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion?
I, I'd just like to say that we, we do offer employees a really great, um, health benefit package. Um, we have the opportunity to add in a, a benefit that, uh, employees have asked for. Um, and that would bring us in line with, uh, other employers, uh, in our community and in our state. Uh, and I am disappointed that we're not going to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner DeBonne?
I vote yes.
Mr. Chang?
No.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you, commissioners. I would just look to our legal counsel and see if we need to, um, seek, uh, perhaps a second motion related to renewals and county administrator signature. I would do additional motions for each of those items. So we would be seeking, um, approval to renew, um, with Sun Life, our current stop loss provider. Um, and also renewing with Pacific Source, our current, um, third-party administrator, as well as, um, county administrator signature on the final Deschutes County Employee Benefits Health Plan documents and service agreements for the 2023 plan year.
So Kim, do you want separate motions for each one of those?
I think it would make a cleaner record.
Okay, excellent. So does someone want to make a motion that on Sun Life?
I'll move to approve renewing with Sun Life, uh, the current stop loss provider and deductible limits for the 2023 plan year.
And I will second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
I'll move for approval of, uh, renewing the Pacific Source, the current third-party administrator for the 2023 plan year.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? They have been with us for how long? Do you know, Whitney or Trevi?
Since the beginning of 2018. So we're going on five years.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, um, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And the fourth, number four?
Uh, move approval of county administrator's signature of the final Deschutes County Employee Benefits Health Plan documents and service agreements for the 2023 plan year.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we're at item number five. It looks like Lee Randall.
Perfect.
Good morning, Lee. You're, you're next.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, Lee Randall, Facilities Director. And I'll let, uh, those with us introduce themselves as well.
Brianna Manfris with Pinnacle Architecture.
Uh, Adam Bowles, Sun West Builders.
And then, uh, joining us, uh, remotely, we have Kevin Link with Sun West Builders and Sean Clifford with Pinnacle Architecture.
Right, thank you.
So, uh, today we're here for a consideration of board's signature of document number 2022 dash seven ninety and amendment to Sun West Builders contract number 2022 dash one nine seven to establish the guaranteed maximum price for the remodel of 244 Kingwood Avenue in Redmond, Oregon, and related site improvements. And, um, this GMP amendment is specific to, uh, 244 Kingwood, which is the majority of that building will be, uh, for behavioral health use, uh, as well as the site improvements, um, that are related to the project as a whole. The, I just wanted to share a little bit of background, then we'll touch on the budget for the, uh, project and then we'll be available for any questions. The, so 244 Kingwood, um, that project is, uh, the interior finish is about 10,000, uh, plus square feet. A portion of that will be housing Mosaic Medical. And then as well in that building, there's about 1,800 square feet, uh, that is recently vacant that, uh, as the project progresses, we'll look at options for use of that space, uh, going forward. Um, we expect to be back to the board in four to six weeks for 236 Kingwood, uh, which is on the same campus, uh, south of the hospital in Redmond. And that building will house, uh, 911 backup dispatch, uh, a public health, uh, clinic and public health, um, staff. And then an area for veteran services and, uh, the county clerk's office and information technology. We have a little additional space that, um, we had been, had been designated for the medical examiner. And we're continuing to work through how that space will and ultimately be utilized. And that portion is about 700 square feet of the first floor of 236. So specifically today, it's for remodel costs for the building, uh, dedicated to behavioral health. And then, uh, we'll be back in a few weeks.
Just acknowledging when we talk about a medical examiner office, it's truly just an office, never, uh,
Correct.
Never medical examiner duties happening there.
Correct. It's just a space for them to meet, store supplies
Yep.
and do, uh, uh, their office-type duties. So in, uh, back in February, uh, the board approved a, uh, construction manager, general contractor contract with Sun West Builders, uh, specifically for pre-construction services. That was $21,000. They've, uh, been instrumental in moving us through the project development process, uh, with Pinnacle Architecture and Design and with the various stakeholders, uh, for the campus and for the two buildings. In July, we discussed the project with the Facilities Project Review Committee. And we talked specifically about the challenges we're having, uh, with the budget and cost increases. And at this point, we're back with, uh, the guaranteed maximum price, uh, after the, the project has been bid out to subcontract, subcontract, subcontractors. And, uh, we're ready to proceed with board approval of the GMP. Specifically related to the budget, um, this GMP is for site work. As it relates to the site, some of the challenges, challenges we're trying to address relate to, uh, flow between the two buildings. Uh, there was not a, a good, safe, accessible path between the two buildings. We're also addressing some accessible, accessibility issues, uh, in the parking lot. Um, and then creating a flow between the entrances on 244. It is a significant, uh, part of the project. Um, we're consolidating, uh, things like garbage trash service since it will be a, um, a, a campus. Uh, and we don't need, you know, one area for both buildings. And then also, uh, we, as part of the site plan, we're looking to maximize the, the number of parking spaces that are available on the campus, um, for folks coming for public, for services. The,
Oh, Lee, can I interrupt you? How far are those two buildings apart? How many feet?
I'll, uh, so we have Sean. He's the project architect. Sean, I'll let you work on that question.
Cause I mean, they're not that close. I mean,
They're on opposite corners.
Yeah.
Of the site, yeah.
Yeah.
There's, um, I don't know how many feet though.
I think Sean will be able to have that answer for us shortly and we'll come.
Okay, I just was, I'm like, I'm thinking like, what are you going to do? Put the trash cans between the two of them in the middle or something?
Yep.
Cause they're not that close and.
Yep.
So the, as a bird, bird flies from entrance to entrance, they are about 180 feet. So, and then the, uh, to the trash enclosure, each of them are about 90. So it's literally halfway in between. So. And that's from the front entrance of both buildings.
So, um, the last thing I just wanted to touch on was, uh, the budget and how that's reflected in the guaranteed maximum price. And then we'll be available for questions. Um, so when we did initial at about ninety percent completion of the construction documents and initial budget estimate, um, the, uh, it was very challenging. And we shared that with the Facility, Facilities Project Review Committee and with commissioners. Uh, since that time, the team has worked really hard to find efficiencies, um, to get, um, more, um, guarantees, uh, about what, um, certain costs will be, uh, as we move into the, the amendment, contract amendment. And so we're able to reduce that, um, over, overage by about fifty percent. Currently, um, compared to what we budgeted from numbers we had in early in the year in January and February, uh, to what we have, um, in front of you today, it's a difference of about $416,000. Uh, various partners on the project have come forward and we've put together a, a funding plan to be able to bridge that gap. Mosaic Medical with their contribution of $215,000. Um, the 911 Service District, uh, related to site work that will benefit, um, the, the backup, uh, dispatch center. Uh, and then Deschutes County Health Services with approximately $142,000. So we've, uh, been able to bridge that gap. Um, that's the funding plan that we have in front of you today, uh, for approval.
Questions real quick?
Sure.
The 911 is going to be in the other building in the end though, correct? So this is just in preparation for getting utilities or COAX back for a radio tower or whatever is going to happen.
Yeah, and it's specifically related to the tower location and prep. Um, the tower itself is not included in this cost. Uh, and when we come back and talk about 236 Kingwood, uh, in a month or so, uh, we'll have information related to 911's cost, uh, specific.
Is the generator staying or what's the status for that?
Yep. So we are working through, uh, rehabbing the existing generator that'll serve 244 Kingwood. And that's one of the, you know, nice things about this campus and being in Redmond. It really fits well with our continuity of business operations plan, having a, um, almost 12,000 square foot building with very solid generator backup. So in the event of, uh, a major power disruption, um, we have that available for a multitude of health services operations where it to be needed in an emergency, uh, not just for behavioral health.
And then the statement you were making before is there was an estimate and then there was a contingency. And I dialed back the total cost of that contingency with numbers that we think are more real.
Correct. And there were, um, on the, on the side of how, where those, what generated those cost, uh, impacts. Um, obviously, we've all been watching the economy and inflation. There are a lot of challenges there. We also added about 400 and some square feet, um, to the project of an area that had been under a lease. Um, the folks that were leasing it, uh, decided they didn't need it. So we had added that portion to the project. So that accounted for a portion of the cost increase as well. Um, and now, like I said, there's another 1,800 square feet of the building that we'll be working through programming and finding, uh, the proper use for that area, um, over the next, uh, couple of months. That is kind of the sum of what we had. Uh, we wanted to have, uh, representatives from Sun West Builders and from Pinnacle Architecture here in case there were any answers that were kind of beyond my expertise. in case there were any answers that were kind of beyond my expertise. And so we're happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Oh, Lee, I do have a question. The $215,000, is that, is that for Mosaic? That's their contribution for this building, then?
Correct. And they, they will be in about just over 1,300 square feet. And that relates to, that will help cover the costs of the tenant improvements for that area of the building.
What are, what are the costs, though, for 1,300 square feet? What, what number are you using now for the square foot cost?
So our, if we were to take the building as a whole, just the building construction, we're at about $231 a square foot. A lot of that relates to things that serve the whole building, where costs may be higher for other portions of the building. So for instance, within Mosaic Medical area, we're not relocating bathrooms or plumbing fixtures. It's basically walls and casework. And so for that type of construction in the area that Mosaic Medical is in, there would be a lower cost per square foot, which is reflected in their contribution. And one thing I failed to mention is we do have, we've been developing a memorandum of understanding with Mosaic Medical, and we'll be returning to the board. If, if the board directs us to move forward with the project and improves the GMP, we'll be back with an MOU for your review as it relates to the $215,000 contribution.
Great. Well, so I just look at the big picture. It's good that we're able to, you know, acquire these properties. Now we're gonna have a very professional rebuild, remodel, purpose-built facility for us. And then also, yeah, keeping the trades going and keeping people busy right now. You know, residential may be slowing, but this will be a government investment. And as I say, keeping the trades going and people working out there at this point in time. So it's really good to see this project come together. And now that we're started, and I mentioned this with the courthouse, too. Now that we're started, we gotta get it done, you know? Getting it done together is the key to this whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, from a big-picture perspective, we, I think we all remember that while Deschutes County provides 30% of its health services, services in North County, we only have 10% of our, our office space for health services in North County right now. So this, these facilities are desperately needed. We, you know, another, you know, think back on, on big picture. Buying pre-existing buildings is a deal compared to new construction. So I, I look at, I look at these costs as basically the costs to make that work. We, you know, we got, we saved money on buying existing buildings versus on new construction. And now we need to make the investments necessary to, to get it done and, and make these spaces usable so that we can provide those important services to our community there.
Do we have a completion date for this building?
So with, two different ways to approach that. One, we're looking at about...
Either yes or no.
Yes. Yes, we do.
Yes, we have a date.
Yes. So about a six-month construction timeframe, which will put us in early May. Once we issue the notice to proceed to Sunwest Builders, they will provide us with a critical path schedule that will be part of their contract. And at that time, we'll establish exact dates for substantial completion, for final completion, punch lists, et cetera. And we'll have exact dates. Currently, about a six-month build time, early May.
Okay.
The dates are getting close to be known.
Yes.
All right.
That's great.
What was our purchase date? When did we sign this document, when we bought him, Lee?
So July, I think if Christie's here, she probably knows the exact date.
July of '21.
Okay, that...
Was 244, and August of '21 was 236.
Okay. Thanks, Christie. Okay, so July of '21. Okay, all right. So we're saying that May of '23, we should be open for business if we're really fortunate.
I think that's, I'll defer to Adam on that.
Yeah, I think it's very realistic. I would comment that the 236 will be staggered from 244 a little bit. So we still will be on-site if that moves forward. And it, you know, they'll be staggered about six weeks or so to two months. And so we will stall over presence on the site, but it'll be down to just doing the 236 building at that point, which will probably finish sometime July-ish, so...
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
Yep.
So with that, I'll move approval for the document number 2022-790, amending Deschutes County contract 2022-197 with Sunwest Builders for the remodel of 244 Kingwood in Redmond, Oregon, and related site improvements.
Second.
Any further discussion? I just have a question. So Mosaic isn't contributing anything else. They don't, they didn't contribute to the purchase of the building, correct? We bought the building?
Correct.
And they're just contributing to the construction upgrade remodeling?
Yep, for their area, yes.
Okay, all right, so...
In the grand scheme of things, I think we need to remember that county public health departments have been ramping down the amount of clinical services that they offer over the last couple decades. So what Mosaic Medical is contributing is providing clinical services in our community that otherwise we would have to be providing.
Well, the good news is they've been here for 20 years, and it was great to attend their anniversary, so I thank them. So Commissioner DeBonne?
I vote yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you for joining us in person today.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thanks for having me.
And good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, other items?
Just a couple notes from myself. You know, the weather's gonna change this weekend, it looks like. And just a reminder, this is the time for that fuel reduction defensible space efforts. As the weather gets cold, get ready to remove, reduce, and, well, not recycle, but get rid of needles. And, you know, think about the big picture, because there's that short window before the weather could come strong in the fall, and that short window in the spring. I just, every spring, you see, well, I'm gonna do some cleanup, and all of a sudden, it's dry. And then, and there's, burning stopped. So I'm just pointing out that right now is the time to make plans for fuel reductions around your private property. And also, the district summary for tax rates is published, and bill, you can review your tax bill on, online. So it's always interesting to know. You go to dial, put in your address, and the tax bill has been published in a PDF version. And it's gonna be mailed, whenever it's gonna be mailed here pretty soon. But page number 45 of the, of the assessed tax roll shows all the total extended calculated rates for all the districts. You know, the total amount for Deschutes County proper, or a rate at $1.21.19 is $36,918,000 this year. And then also, just another fun thing, Lapine Park and Recreation District, I was on that board years ago before I was a commissioner. And it was about $250,000 rate for the longest time. In fact, it went down 10 years ago for a year or two because of the recession. But now it's gonna be $332,000, which is $15,000 more than last year. So there's just interesting trends, and the numbers have been published for this year.
Okay. Well, if you can't sleep at night, I suggest dialing into dial.
Well, you can find your own tax bill, which is always interesting.
Yes. And then you can look at your bill. That sounds like, will I wait for the surprise to come in the mail? I don't know. Any other items, Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I would, I'd just report back Thursday last week. I, I'm a member of the Community Renewable Energy Program Advisory Board for the State of Oregon. And at that meeting, they, they made official the award of $1 million to the Mount Bachelor project via the county. We were bringing it as their, their sponsor for that application. I was disappointed that we didn't get a, a second award for our own facilities. But I understand that they need to spread the money around, and giving two to Deschutes County might, might look inappropriate. But I, I hope we will consider resubmitting those, those really good resiliency and renewable energy projects that we queued up earlier in, in the year in the cycle that is just about to open up in a couple of weeks for the, the next round of crap money.
I'll just acknowledge, it's exciting. You know, Mount Bachelor, just for people that may be hearing about it, it's a rough chip boiler to replace propane at Mount Bachelor. So that's, that's the big picture. But when I say rough chips, that's the, the raw product, well, that's the produced product that comes out of small diameter fuel reduction efforts in the forest. So it's just very exciting. We're able to close the loop on that.
It is a really exciting project. The, I, I also attended the, a local government advisory committee meeting on Friday that was convened by AOC. I can, can participate in the call as well. And there's, I, I wouldn't even attempt to report back everything that, that was discussed at that meeting. But basically, the focus was on solving our aid and assist population issues. And there were some really, there were some very good ideas put forward for how we can move forward on that issue in partnership with the state. And there were also, there was also just some really good information about what, what it takes in terms of facilities to serve that population and to address various kinds of state hospital, residential treatment facility-type needs. You know, what, what different types of facilities can and can't do for different kinds of populations. So I, I think that that group is gonna be a really productive, hopefully, place for us to engage with the state as we continue to try to address the aid and assist challenges that we're facing. On Monday, I attended some, some presentations from the, what's called the Oregon Finance Authority, OFA, which I had, was not familiar with before the last couple of weeks. But now I've learned is a really great source of low-interest financing for nonprofits in the area that want to do capital-type projects. You know, buy property, build a new building, you know, remodel, refinance current building debt that they already have. And there were a huge number of local nonprofits, a number of our, our friends that we work with on a regular basis from the county in attendance at that meeting. And, and I hope that, that information's useful for them. They, you know, one of the, one of the things that they specifically said at, at this meeting was, as the Fed dials interest rates up, the, the lower interest rates of, you know, offered by the OFA to nonprofits become more and more attractive. So this is a program that was maybe not as heavily used in the past when, you know, Fed interest rates were incredibly low. And now, as those rates are going up, this is gonna become a more and more attractive financing source for local nonprofits.
Do you know what the interest rate is they're offering at this moment?
Basically, basically, they come in at whatever, whatever a commercial, a commercial rate you could get at a bank is for such a project. They come in at about four-fifths of that. So I, I, I think that they, things are actually pegged or benchmarked in some way, so that they just come in. They always come in, you know, at 79% of what you could, you could get at a bank. So the higher the rates go up, the, the, the better 79% of, of that rate looks. So I, I don't know exactly what they're offering right now. But they, they do, they offer these loans through existing banks, not, not directly through the Oregon Finance Authority. And, and like, I would not be the right person to explain the complex structure of how, how the state, treasury, banks, and nonprofits all kind of interact to make these deals happen. But the, the, the punchline is lower interest rates for, for nonprofit projects. And, and you, you know, everybody was there. Heart of Oregon Corps was there. Lapine Community Health Clinic was there, you know, a lot of, you know, childcare. People who are interested in building childcare, so it was a very interesting discussion. Finally, one other thing I'd mention is that I, I went to the City Club presentation on ranked choice voting yesterday, and that was, that was very interesting. And then someone asked a question about our nonpartisan county commissioner ballot measure that's coming up. And in response to that question, our, you know, very visible, prominent electoral politics leader in our, in our community, Jeff Eager, said that he thought that the nonpartisan commissioner ballot measure would result in more moderate candidates running for office in Deschutes County in the future. I was pleased to hear him say that.
Great.
So one question, maybe Dave can help with this. Oregon Finance Authority, is that the St. Charles Facility Board? Is that the same scenario there, when, when St. Charles, you know, got the big bond dollars that I think Commissioner Derr is on that facility committee? Is that the same world?
The Hospital and Facilities Financing Authority, I think you're referring to, which one is different than what Commissioner Chang was referring to?
Okay, yeah, that was just my one question, if it's different or not. Great, thank you. So I guess I have two more other little items here. So Redmond Economic Development Board, we had a board meeting this morning. Heart of Oregon Corps was explaining their visions there, too. So they're really doing a good job reaching out to explain the opportunities. And there were, Laura Handy was there thanking us for our investment from ARPA dollars, $100,000 that we had committed to a week or two ago. And then also, the Association of Oregon Counties Exchange Program. I don't know if my fellow commissioners had signed up for that, but I was able to get on the phone with Commissioner Triger from Lane County this morning. We had talked previously in passing, but we had scheduled time just to talk. So we're getting to know each other, so just a, kind of a sharing program for commissioners around the state. I'll be able to spend a little bit of time with her at the November conference in Eugene also, which is real close. She lives like two miles from there, and her offices are real close to there. But just, you know, a little effort in the exchange program around the state also.
Is that it?
That's it.
You know, one other thing I'll mention, since we just mentioned Heart of Oregon Corps, and Commissioner DeBonne started his other items comments with talking about fuels reduction. The Oregon Conservation Corps is a great program that was launched out of Senate Bill 762, provided a million dollars to efforts in the central Oregon region through Heart of Oregon and through COIC to support, you know, youth workforce development focused on careers in fuels reduction and wildfire. So the, the OCC is going to have its first in-person advisory board meeting here in Deschutes County, in, in band next, well, the, the indoor meeting will be in band on Thursday next week. And then on Friday, there will be field trips to some of the projects where youth are implementing fuels reduction on, on private landowners' properties in Deschutes County, both in Lapine in the morning, on the, on the 28th. Sorry, not all the way to Lapine, in between Sun River and Lapine, off Vandervert Road. And then another project in the Redmond area in the afternoon, if anyone's interested in visiting.
Great.
Okay. All right. I did want to acknowledge that I did attend the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Walk on Saturday morning. And I want the community, I know there were a lot of things that happened with COVID. A lot of unhealthy things happened. And now, apparently, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, it used to be someone was killed by a drunk driver every 51 minutes. It's now down to every 45. So hopefully, next year's walk will have a, will be going, will be trending back up again to that 51 minutes. It's, it's really sad when you think that we have Uber, we have a way to get home, and it's really important not to drive impaired. I wanted to acknowledge that on Monday afternoon, I was joined by Christie Bollinger, and we walked the neighborhood in Redmond around our, our safe parking area, talking to neighbors and meeting their dogs. So we, we had a really productive afternoon.
Did you explain it to anybody about your dog Jake?
My dog Jake. He's my new running mate.
Yeah, there you go.
Yes, Jake, my, no, did I, yeah, I did show a picture. Somebody told me I should not have dog bites on my hand, and I, you know what? I don't know. He's awfully cute. So it was incredibly worthwhile. We did, we did talk to several of the homeowners, and then we had a meeting... then we had a meeting after at 4:00 with Police Chief Lewis and John Roberts from Redmond, and, and Pastor Rick was there, too. And so, just talking about the area and what the program could accomplish. So, I know we'll be, we'll be talking about that later. And I want to acknowledge also, last night, we recognized our Fair Association for the outstanding that work they did when we had our joint meeting with the Fair Board. That, the association is an amazing group of volunteers, and the fair was incredibly successful, and I want to thank the entire team for all the hard work that they did. And one of the things to look forward to next year is that they have brought a liaison to 4H and FFA on part of their immediately 15-person board, and I think that's really important. So, always looking how to do a better Deschutes County Fair. It's, it's really, it's such an important history for Deschutes County, and I'm so grateful that we have a wonderful fair. So, those were my items. Nick, do you have anything?
Thank you, Chair. Just a reminder that this evening, in this room, is the first community open house on the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan 2040 update. So, for those of you that are watching online, we're at 1,300 Northwest Wall Street. The event is from 5:30 until 7:30. So, please come and tell us what you think about the future of, in particular, rural Deschutes County. And then tomorrow, we'll have a second one in Sisters, at the Sisters High School, 1,700 West McKinney Butte Road, from 4:00 to 6:00. So, that one starts in the afternoon to provide some flexibility for people and time and location. So, thank you, commissioners. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Nick. Do we have two more after that?
We do have two more after that.
Why don't we let people know so they can put it in their calendar, if you have the dates in front of you?
Sure, because they are soon, and actually, they'll be before our next meeting. So, the next, the next one we'll have in Sun River, at the Sun River Homeowners Aquatic and Recreation Center, commonly referred to as the SHARC, at 57250 Overlook Road, in this, in Sun River, in the Benham Hall. And that is, yeah, Monday, October 24th, from 4:00 to 6:30 PM. And then the next day, the last one scheduled at this point, will be in Redmond, at the Redmond City Hall, 411 Southwest 9th Street, in rooms 207 and 208. So, that's going to be upstairs in Redmond City Hall, and, and again, a different time. That will be on Tuesday, October 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Great. Thank you. So, if you want to get part, be part of the feedback for 2040, please note those dates. You can probably find them on our website, too. Thank you, Nick. Anything else? Okay, so I do believe we need to go into executive. So...